Go call, all members are present this evening. Principal report, we don't have any principals except you Jeff.
We're all gone.
Okay, no student reps? Agenda additions and deletions?
I've got it, 5.0 you skipped over there.
I'm sorry, achievement recommendation.
I have quite a list tonight, actually. I'm gonna start out on the athletic field. This past, last week, end of the week, we sent a number of girls and boys to track state. On the girls' side, Mackenzie Peruszek, Maddie Jankula, who incidentally took fifth in the high jump, or seventh. She got a medal, how about that? That was terrible, but, I think it was seventh. Reona Curry, Erin Craven, Callie Olson, and Jada Torma. On boys track, Austin Erickson, Jake Weston, Josh Weston, Spencer Garland, John Day, Kelly Hackola, and Evan Hendrickson, all competed at the state. Today and tomorrow, Molly Albright and Thea Kiwatausi are competing in the girls' golf state tournament. And on the boys' side, John Scholberg and Sam Albrook are participating today and tomorrow. So, that is good. We finished up the school year and I started this third quarter, so I want to read to the exemplary honor roll folks from fourth quarter. In 11th grade, Sarah Coldageli, these are all kids that got 4.0s, fourth quarter. Samantha Haas, Sidney Karpik. In 10th grade, we have Lacey Bonhams, Sidney Ho, Kyle Kwitek, Alana Lindberg, Jacob Lindhorst, Chloe Scheckinger, and Kyle Sickel. In 9th grade, we have Lauren Day, Audrey Delitch, Kaylee Grahec, Hannah Grenwich, Cody Intihar, Riley Kiwatauski, Megan Larson, Robert Licari, and J.C. Zazadny. In 8th grade, we have Avery Delinsick, Carly George, Michaela Kibbe, Zach Linseth, Angela Lopez, Blake Mortensen, Ashley Pionk, and Elizabeth Stanaway. And finally, in 7th grade, we have Amara Carey, Alex Garland, Ellie Jankula, Kayden Krumpetich, Holly Kutsi, Jacob Sickel, Andrew Terrell, and Amelia Wagner. So congratulations to all of those folks.
Good job.
That's all I have for that one.
Okay. Now we can move on to 6.0. Agendas, additions and deletions.
I have one, 12.6. The chair will need to do a summary on the superintendent evaluation.
That concludes 6.0. 7.0, we have no one signed up, so there's no visitor input. 8.0, has approved the agenda. Motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.0, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, May 23rd, and the special meeting of June 7th.
I'll move that we approve the minute.
Motion, Putzel? I'll support it. Any other discussion, changes? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll stay in on that. Keep with the fact that it was done present at that meeting, at the 23rd.
Okay, so noted. Thank you. 10.0, business office affairs, approve the treasures report for the month of May and the first check writing of June. Aye?
For the month of May, we have receipts of $975,541.31. We had disbursements of $404,724.63. Payroll of $639,186.31. For the first check writing of June, we have 110, in disbursements, $110,536.39. I make a motion to accept the treasures report.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. All is, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Under business office affairs, I was wondering if we could move up 12.3, so that our high maintenance insurance agent can get to his baseball game.
Okay, if the board has no objection to it. Jamie, you want to step up to the podium?
Thanks Jeffrey.
You're welcome.
Imagine that, huh? Baseball game. Alright, um, do you guys have a copy of?
I'll give them the quote.
Of those quote sheets? Okay. Try to stay on track of every two to three years of quoting out our insurance package, just to make sure we're in the right place for coverages, or more importantly, the right place for premiums. No doubt, it's no secret that, you know, but the budgets are tough right now. So, in going through this year again, and breaking those apart, I think we do need to make a change. So, those you have in front of you there, just a couple of quick numbers. Our expiring premium from last year?
Jamie, I just, one thing quick, they have the quote from, is it?
From EMC?
EMC.
EMC.
The other one was rather confusing, the one from Riverport?
It kind of is, so.
So I was hoping that you just take them through.
I can just give you some numbers, if that's alright, of where those are at, so you have something to compare this to. Our expiring from last year was $19,158. This year, our experience mod has gone down. We've been, we've been meeting a lot on work comp, trying to get those experience mods down, trying to stay on top of some of these claims through the carrier, and it's, we're seeing some results. So, this year's renewal, if we stay where we're at, would be $177,056. You see the numbers in front of you from EMC? That quote, in essence, is everything we currently have with one, actually, large addition. Their standard procedure is, they take the building values, and they figure, they assume you should have a 20% personal property, just across the board. So if you turn the building upside down, everything that comes out. On a home policy, you'll see that, it's always 70%, your personal property of the dwelling. They use a value of 20. In their history, they feel it's appropriate. We were like, about 12. We have been with Riverport for a long, long time. That's just always what it's been, it's always what we've done. EMC said we won't do it for that. So this quote is actually including us at 20% for personal property. So, there's a little more protection there, if need be, but.
Susan, you were getting more for less, basically.
I, yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Better way to put it, anyway.
We've got some history with these folks now. They are very aggressive, they are very much on top of the school market. So, I think it's the right thing to do, at this point, and we try to monitor as much as we can. We're up to, you know, to quite a few local schools that we're working with, so I think this is the right move, by far. But again, that's your decision, I see no reason why we don't make that change. Sorry, I talked a lot. You guys got any questions? Anything you can think of?
Okay, so the bottom line is 152, 669?
Correct. Yep.
And 56 cents.
Correct, yep. About $39,000 less, a little, from last year, so.
Well, the way things are going, any, anything will help.
Yeah, yeah. Not very often you can deliver those kind of messages, but it's.
Usually it's the other way.
I mean, it is, I just, I don't know. We try to work hard and make sure we're doing the right thing for you guys, and I think that that's the right move, so.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Sure, I appreciate the business, so.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept?
Yep.
I'll move that we accept the new premium for EMC insurance.
Support.
Motion, Peterson, supported by Sean Lob. Any other discussion? Other than that, we're saving $39,000, yeah, that's good.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Jamie. Now you go to the ballgame. Back to 11.0. 11.1, accept the resignation of Crystal Scuffy, elementary teacher, that's in front of you. Need a motion in a second to accept?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion, Putzel, support by 40. Just a note, I don't know, thank you for a letter for all the years of service she's had. She's had nine years here, so. With that being said, any, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, do we have to post for this position, or do we have someone on ULA to pull back?
I am not posting at this moment.
Okay, okay.
I still have some things to shake out with the internal candidates.
Okay. 11.2, approve the lane change for Kristy Hill?
The reposting of that one will probably come, probably the July meeting will probably hit that one.
So, we need a motion and a second for approve the lane change for Kristy Hill, from an MA to an MA plus 10?
I'll move. Forward.
Motion, Peterson, second by Gentolini. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.3, accept the notice of retirement from Kathleen Sandy.
I'll move.
Okay, with motion by, Mona?
I'll second.
Second by Mark? 40. Trying to make sure which Mark, well.
Take your pick.
Take your pick, okay. Any discussion? Thank you, how many years did Kathleen have in the district? 20?
Says 18 on the letter.
18, is it?
Here, sir.
Oh.
In two different.
18, yeah, okay, she was, yeah, okay. Okay, all is, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.4, approve the lane change for Paul Brainerd, from an MA to an MA plus 20.
So moved.
Forward.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve Brendan Addy for summer technology help.
Yeah, this is something that should have been on the last May agenda, and I do apologize for that, he did start last Wednesday. These are tasks that we need to have done this summer, and it's far better having him here than spending $119 an hour having CW do it.
Very true. And it's at $9 an hour, correct? Okay, we need a motion and a second?
I'll move, we approve the Addy, Brendan, Brendan Addy for summer technology help.
I'll support.
Support by Sean Lob. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.6, approve the 1.0 FTE elementary teaching appointment of Amanda Brunfeld.
This is a probationary recall, this will be her fourth contract, so she will be tenured in this fall.
Okay. Need a motion and a second, the salary is $43,074, he's a VA step four.
I'll move, we approve the appointment of Amanda Brunfeld.
Support.
Motion, 40, second by Sean Lob. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.7, approve the elementary teaching appointment of Lori Koapala.
Same thing, recall of probationary, this will be her second year.
So moved.
Motion, Sean Lob?
Support.
Support by Chad. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.8, approve the full-time principal appointment of Angie Williams.
At the time of the posting, we posted for a 5'8" principal, interviewed a number of candidates, and narrowed it down to three with the board. Wanted to move Angie forward as the 5'8" principal. Since then, obviously, you'll see Donna, number 1110, that the high school principal has resigned as well. Given Angie's nine years of experience as a high school principal, and we didn't have any other applicants that had any experience, I guess I would like to move Angie to the high school, and repost for the 5'8" principal. But, at the same time, the current recommendation is for Ms. Williams to be at a level two. Salary-wise, being in the high school, she should be at a level one. And the other thing that I would like to see the board at least consider, is currently our principal's contract, for whatever reason, I have no idea how it got that way, it runs August to August, which is contrary to just about the rest of the state and the rest of our contracts. I would like to see that moved up to July 1st, because as of June 30th, I'm gonna be the last one here, so I kind of wouldn't mind having a little bit of help in July.
Okay, would the level two to level one position be more money?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you have any idea how much it is?
I can get that for you in a second.
Just for board information, that's all. While Jeff is looking for the pay scale, we can go ahead and entertain a motion to accept, and then add in the salary, if that's okay with.
I just, I guess I just wanted to ask the question of, do principals have a probationary period, or do we just hire them, or are they just assigned as a? I mean, because that just kind of, I think like, the teachers are, ask me, it has like an 80% scale based in their contract.
Not for principal with that many years in, not in the state anyhow.
The difference is level one is 99.
718.
Okay, okay. So, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I mean, a new principal, like, what would be a second year incentive, you know, I mean, if we came in at the top rate, but.
I'll make a motion that we hire Angie Williams in the position of high school principal.
Yeah.
And can we include the level in that motion? Or do you want a separate motion?
Yeah, I don't have it in the recommendation, so you'll have to.
I would like to follow the contract, and we've generally put the high school principal at level one, so I'd like to make this position level one also.
Okay, that's in your motion, I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Can I just ask about the July date?
Do we have to negotiate that technically, or can that just be a motion?
We can do it in a separate motion.
It doesn't, see, it doesn't affect us financially at all, I mean, it's still 220 day contract.
Oh no, I get it, but I mean, formally, I mean, technically, you would be the other person to negotiate with, because you're the only principal on paper. I mean, we could just.
The motion is effective July 1st, correct?
I think that's what we're sorting out.
I think he wanted it just ASAP.
Let's do a separate motion on that.
Alright, so the motion is.
Well, do that one, and then we'll talk about the other one.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Alright, the motion is to hire Angie at, a level one, and as high school principal, not as junior high.
Okay, and I second that motion before, so are there any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll stay. I wouldn't need to make a change.
Motion carries.
So, under the terms of, oh, I'm probably speaking out of term here, but, well, let's start the conversation. So, under the terms of agreement, this agreement shall be effective August 1st, 2015, so Mike is probably correct, we should probably negotiate that.
I mean, we can negotiate with you right now, I guess, but I mean, it has to be, doesn't it?
No, not at a regular meeting.
Doesn't that have to be, I mean?
You're right.
Good point.
We can have a, we can do like, MOU for the remainder of this contract.
We understand for the remainder of the year, yeah.
And we can probably have that on the June 27th agenda?
Yeah.
Because we can, oh, well, she would take, when is her effective date? Now, or per?
Well, it'd be, if we can change it, it'd be July 1st.
I just thought you wanted that time now, with her, with the net too, is my point. Maybe we should do a little something for that, or no? Or did, or just let it?
Do you want to have her start immediately because of the situation we're in?
I think because of the transition.
Yeah, I guess I would like to hire her.
Effective today?
Well, no, because that, then you're dealing with benefit issues, so I mean, I think if we, if we set a daily rate for her to, if we did like a daily rate of pay, stipend?
Right, that's what I was kind of getting to, is we bridge the gap, tell her the contract date starts, and then, I mean, based on whatever you think is fair, so we can get her in here to get trained, well, the net's here.
Yeah, because we do have the transition period, so.
We need some transition. So we need a motion to the effect, as it said.
Do you want it included?
Rate of pay?
I think we should do a daily rate of pay for up to five days in the month of June, up to five days. She may not even be available, I don't know.
Well, that's, we have another question.
So I guess if you wanted to make that motion, we could, and then we'll, we would need to reconvene the negotiating team sometime soon, and have that in place by the June 27th meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So we need a separate motion, then, for the daily rate? Do you want to designate what that specifically just?
Her daily rate of pay.
Just, okay, based on this level one.
Based on level one contract.
So you take the level one and divide it by 220.
Alright, just so I'm clear that that's what we're doing, I'll make that motion, that we provide up to five days in the month of June, have the determined.
Daily rate.
Daily rate of a level one principal.
Okay, need a second?
I'll support.
Support Peterson. Any other discussion on that?
Thank you.
Okay, that'll help with that one, that'll be part of the package for the appointment of Angie.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome Angie.
Welcome.
Okay, 11.9, approve the FTE special education teaching appointment of Jamie Freihight, is that right?
Yep, Jamie comes to us from Canada, has taught a number of years in alternative programs up there, so he's making a new home here in northern Minnesota. Would like to hire him for special ed. This is an open position, it's not a new position. But, when you make the motion, I didn't include this in there, sorry. It needs to be contingent on him securing a variance from the state of Minnesota.
So we need a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion by Sean Lob?
Support.
Support by.
Putzel. Sean Lob and Putzel.
I was gonna say Putzel, you know.
Leon Putzel.
Okay.
We need to have morning meetings, so he's, he's present.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.10, accept the resignation of Donette Sibo.
No.
What if we make the motion not to?
Make a motion, yeah.
Do we just do it, Leon?
Then we have to move Angie around again.
No, no, then we make Donette the junior high principal.
Oh, there we go. An appointment, right?
Good.
I need a motion, any of us, we don't want to see her go, but wish her well.
I will move that we accept with great regret her resignation, and a cake, and flowers, and a letter of thanks would be great.
There's been enough cake last week, but, we're done with cake, plus she'll, oh, I can't say that aloud, I was gonna say she'll have it every day, but, that's probably out of bounds.
I will regretfully support that.
Okay, any other discussion, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Angie, you've got some big shoes to fill.
Her shoes are actually big, it's size.
You got this covered.
You really see what you look forward to, right? There'll be nobody else to defer anything over there either.
Been you for a couple months here.
Okay, moving on, 12.0, new business, 12.1, approve the 2016-17 membership to MREA, Minnesota Rural Education Association. Renewal fee for this year is $2,268?
Yeah, which is up a buck from last year, we paid for that out of staff development funds.
They do good work.
Yep. Okay, need a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Motion, Putzel, let's see, I gotta write this down.
Good.
Second?
Support.
Sean Lob. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.2, set the date for the July board meeting.
Just throw off there that date, that's recommended, doesn't work for me, but doesn't necessarily mean anything. That whole week is kind of off for me, but.
The 25th might be bad for me, that Monday, I don't know yet. But if we could schedule it some other day in the week, it would be better for me.
In what week? That week, or the week before?
Do the same week, just.
The week of July 25th.
The week of July 25th is bad?
Different day works?
Mike says it's bad.
No, no, the day is bad.
Yeah, I won't be here that whole week.
The rest of the week is fine.
I mean, but that doesn't, oh, but, ARI is gonna be here that, or no, they're gonna be here next meeting.
They will be, but they'll also be at that July meeting.
How does the third week of July work for you?
Third week's for me, everything other than that week works for me. I mean, I would come in on the fourth week even, I don't care, but, but that's probably soon for ARI, if they're gonna present again.
Yeah, I'm gone, maybe I can be alive.
And this is what he's, if we do it here.
18, 19, and 25, I could possibly not make.
18, you can't make?
18, 19, and 25, in those two weeks, those are three bad dates for me.
Pardon? The Wednesday of that third week?
20th.
20th would be fine. That's a Wednesday.
20th work for everybody?
Well, no.
Okay, 20th.
Be kind of off, but.
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Well, I gotta, I'm wondering when I gotta have the agenda out, I'm gonna look here.
Oh, I mean.
I'd probably get the agenda out by that Friday, the 15th.
We could do that Thursday, if, I mean, if it helps you, if, I got nothing else that week, is what I'm saying.
21's okay for me also.
20th or 21st?
I'd rather do 21, because then I can have the agenda out on Monday, that'd be fine. You wanna do 21?
21st, okay.
No, I won't be here, but you can meet without me, and that's.
Oh, no, we're not doing that, how about the 20th?
No, the ARI is gonna be here.
Yeah, we should all.
We need you.
20th works better for me.
Let's do that, though.
Are you sure?
Yep.
And that's gonna be a 5 o'clock regular time, right?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Need a motion on that one, though.
Okay, need a motion and a second, I have to change the date.
So moved, for the 20th.
Motion, Sean Lob, second by Gentolini. We're moving the reading to the 20th of July at 5:00 PM. Any other discussion, which we've already had, any, okay? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. 12.3 is already done, 12.4, approve the 2016 services contract with ARRC. ARCC, I'm sorry.
Arrowhead Regional Computing Consortium, these are, this is our financial, finance help. Help us with UFRS and payroll and personnel. You can see about three quarters of this fee of $36,695 is taken out of operating capital and that was budgeted for this year.
Okay. Need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion Putzel, second by 40. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. 12.5, discussion on a technology support.
All right, a couple things on this. One, you have in front of you, I've, I guess, I've talked about this E-rate process that we're going through right now. Part of what we turned in for approval, hopefully later this summer, was a change in service from this co-op, which there'll be one line coming into this building and then going over to Gilbert, rather than what we have going on right now. And with that, we only need to change one firewall. Our firewall is, our current firewall cannot support what we have coming in now, let alone if we, we upgraded to a 300 meg line. And I would like to get this done ahead of time. We can still, just because we do it now, as long as we do it after July 1st, and we get approved for E-rate, we can still submit to, as part of that grant. So the first part is, is the single firewall, rather than the two that we have now. And then the second form you see there is the content filter. That's, that goes with the firewall, that's the software that decides what can come in and what can't, as far as content filters out. This is what all of our kids spend hours and hours trying to get around.
That's how they learn.
That's how they learn.
That's right.
So we have that part.
Can we take this money out of the money that we set aside?
For now, we, we could do that. And then, like I said, when we go, when we get our E-rate funds, we can, we can back, we can apply them back to that E-rate.
Okay.
Grant. Yes, I would propose that we, we do that now out of the set aside fund, which there's about $64,000 left in there. So I get, well, let's take that up first, you guys can decide if.
Is that going to fix our problems?
This is going to be a major fix on problems, it will not fix it altogether. The rest of the package together will fix our network problems, but this is, this is enemy number one.
I guess I just, I, I think we had a tech committee meeting that night that I wasn't able to go, right? And I wasn't, I didn't hear anything about that, so.
I apologize for that, I should have sent you some notes, but this is, this is what we did talk about.
And it's just that every year when we start school, we have, we're not technical savvy district, right? I mean, and we keep throwing money at it since I've been here and nothing's fixed the problems and I hope this.
We got a half a dozen people that claim to be experts and.
Well, I brought, I brought somebody from more than a hundred miles away to, to come tell me that.
And that's why I'm hoping that this starts a new curve in the road. Time will tell, but, so we would, we would write this check after July 1st. When would we have it installed, so we could start knowing if it's doing something?
Yeah.
Very soon thereafter. He would, if we approve it tonight, he'll order the equipment. We can actually pay for it. By E-rate, E-rate allows us to purchase things on, on July 1st.
And, yeah, the money, the logistics of the money I get, I just, I'm just setting yourself up for.
It would be soon thereafter, you, you can get it in in July.
I guess I'm setting you up to say that, you know, come September 1st, you're going to lie to us and tell us everything's great when school starts, right?
I'm not, I never have. I've never told you that it's all great. Because it's not.
Three years of support at no cost to the school district.
It's part of the, part of the price.
Do we need to take these separate, or we can bundle these together?
Huh?
Can we bundle these?
I would take this item up first, and then I'm going to hit you with another one here in a second.
But these two items.
One item.
It's, it's a firewall and the software to support it.
So it's, it's kind of a.
Prove the quote from TechCheck, how about that?
For both items, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Need a motion and a second to accept the quotes from TechCheck for the two quotes that we have. One, first total, first quote is $11,884.44. The second one is for $9,629.54. Need a motion to accept them both.
I'll move.
Motion Putzel.
Support.
Support Sean Lob. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so then the second part of my sermon would be. We have, you know, we've, we've been contracting our network administrator services out for a number of years. There was a time when, I don't know, it was probably six, seven years ago, when we had our own person. I guess I would, at this point, given that we're doing some network upgrades that, that our current provider is not willing to work with. And we've talked about this before, but I, I guess I would like to see us move back toward having in-house technology support staff. And that could help us out in a number, number of ways. I mean, right now, we, we really don't, I mean, we're, we're dependent on people that are several miles away. And it's nothing against them, I mean, it is what it is. We, we got what we paid for there. I think they helped us out transitioning in, in, from where we were. But I think we've outgrown that now and we need some people on the ground. So I guess I would like the board to consider posting for a full-time technology or network administrator and a part-time network administrator helper. And I also would like the chair to create an ad hoc committee for, to look at formulating the at-will contract for those people. The cost of this would be, and I, and at that previous tech meeting that I did, I did share the potential costs and obviously I don't know what the cost of a new contract would be, as it's not been negotiated yet. But assuming that we're in the $35 an hour range, which is what most folks around here are at other schools, it would pretty much be a wash from what we're currently paying for a network administrator and the person that we have on site that does not have a contract, so.
For our part-time, don't we have Tom Presen doing that?
Right, but he doesn't have, he's kind of hanging out there, he doesn't have a contract. So we need to do something about that. And also with our, with our new person, whether it be Tom or whoever, we should just have people here at will, without a contract.
I would like to ask a question, I mean, we have, from what I understand, two iPad people.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Is, is that something that, like, those positions could be pushed into this?
Yes.
I mean, we can maybe get rid of them or reassign them and try to compo, you know, I mean.
The, the idea that, that I threw by at that committee meeting was to, in the first year, eliminate half of that and then in the second year, probably the other half.
And just push it all on the technology administrator and the helper?
Yes.
So what size of a committee are you looking for?
Two or three people, I mean, just.
Mona's already said it, she was like.
Someone to, I just, I think we need to, you know, on this, probably unprecedented, why it is with this board is we've never developed anything like that, but I think we need to start somewhere and, and do it right, rather than just hire somebody and not know what we're doing.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there anyone else who'd like?
I would participate.
Okay, anyone else? When do you usually have your meetings? For this ad hoc committee about looking at this?
That would depend on who's involved. I mean, it's all about schedules.
Yeah.
They'll put me on there just to break a tie. We got odd number.
Mark wants to be the tiebreaker.
No, no, they, yeah.
Or Mark could be the tiebreaker.
Whoever, any one of us could be, yes.
Okay, well, we'll start with those three, if we see how that works, but.
Right, I will contact them for a date.
To post for these already now, so we can get this started.
Well, I, I think, yeah, let's do that, but I'm not going to post it tomorrow, though, I want to get things.
You want to get, have a meeting first before we do the posting, so we should include it.
If I may, what's, what's the scope of this committee now? I mean, it's to develop a position?
We're going to develop a, a job description and contract for an at-will employee. For two net, two at-will employees.
And right now, we're going to call them at-will positions?
So, we need a motion.
Do we, or you want to motion for the postings?
For the postings, I won't do that right now until we.
No, but you can, you can do the postings whenever you want.
As soon as we have some agreement on what this contract might look, then I'll post.
We need this first, but we also, while we, once, once we get the committee together and come up with something, we wouldn't have to wait for another meeting to have the posting.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
When somebody calls asking, you know, what, what's an approximate salary range, I mean, it'd be nice to have an answer.
Okay.
Right, so at this point, the motion is simply to post.
Post and create an ad hoc committee, or you can do that separately if you like.
To come up with a contract and develop a job description for the positions of network administrator and an assistant.
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Who, who motion?
I made it. Well, nobody else jumped in, that's why I am, we got to get, so, okay. Any other discussion on this? Other than, should be interesting. And hopefully we'll come up with something and come up with something better than what we have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, actually, you didn't vote yet, so.
No.
Pull up, thank you back for a couple seconds.
Anyone else, anyone else have anything to say? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Okay, 12.6, superintendent evaluation, I'm just, it's going to be short and sweet. At the regular meeting of May 23rd, the Board of Education evaluated the district superintendent on his performance of the past. And the board found the superintendent to be performing his duties adequately and are satisfied with his performance. That's all we have. Okay, we have to formally accept that or just state it?
Nope.
Okay.
Just a statement.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
I had a couple of things here for you. As you pass that around, at the last special session, there was a motion in support to participate in a collaboration to do a structural study on the junior high building. I did contact the city clerk administrator slash administrator. Last week, met with her. Their architect currently that they are working with is the same one that we are working with, so we contacted them and they're preparing a quote for just such a thing. What's the other one? That's where we're at right now.
Just as a, as a point of conversation there, I mean, that's all going to be the city, right? I mean, we're not going to devote any resources to them doing that structural integrity. We're just going to allow them access.
We allow them access.
Okay.
What you have in front of you is just a summary of the legislative session and how that affects education, so I kind of wanted to brief you on that. And to give credit where credit is due, Steve Georgi came up with this from Rams, came up with this form, I didn't, so much as I'd like to take credit for it. Thanks, Steve. So anyway, real quick, what, how this affected education, there was a $25 million allocation for voluntary pre-K. There's lots of strings attached to how this happens. We happen to fall within the guidelines of, of a school that could apply for these and we are in the process of doing that. Andrew's watched a few webinars and the due date is July 1st and we'll, we'll have ours in. We expect that we could possibly get some new monies, but that's 25 million for the entire state, so it's not a ton. The next one on the list, there's only two, two items of money in the whole, whole session that affects schools. And the second one is 12.1 million allocated for student support services. This would, this is available, this is also a grant program that's available to schools. It was mainly for counselors, school nurses, and I'm sure there's a couple of other spots that I'm missing, but student support services, staff that are directly involved with students. We currently don't have any licensed school nurse and I'm in the process of applying for these, this grant funding for that. This is a matching grant, so it's a dollar for dollar. If we spend a dollar, they give us one, so this isn't a direct, but I'm going to, I'm going to apply for it and see what happens. That's also a July 1st deadline. There were a number of new task forces, you can see, were created through legislation. Just going through some of the language that was, that was passed. The first one on the list there, the Board of Teaching may grant a waiver to school districts who are implementing experimental programs and learning management. We're not involved there. Special Ed, education license permission issued by the Board of Teaching. They can, basically, they can, they can issue a one-year professional license if you don't have the education background, but you have a professional and you have a bachelor's degree. They're trying to address the teacher shortage, is what that amounts to. On page two, teacher preparation program reporting. This again is dealing with the teacher shortage that's going on out there statewide. It's just a reporting thing. General controls a school, teacher of record shall have general control of government, a school and classroom. This is a, this is a little bit of a sticky one, because it basically authorizes teachers to remove a student from their class, but it doesn't specify where that student is going to go or how he's going to be educated. And there are all kinds of, all kinds of questions revolving around this one right now. So, see how that goes. School crisis response team. We're, we're now mandated to have a crisis response team. Good news is, we're already doing that. We, we, we name one at the beginning of every school year and put it on our crisis plan. Required knowledge and understanding of civics, real, generally, they're, they're now going to have a civics test that has to be administered every year. And you have to pass, and if you don't, you don't pass. There's, there's no teeth to this one, but we have to administer it. We like more tests. Another mandate. That's going to cost us money and has no.
No funding behind it?
No funding behind it. Next one up is physical education standards, beginning in the 2016-2017 school year. We must adopt the most recent National Association of Sport and Physical Education kindergarten through grade 12 standards and benchmarks. We are checking into that to see if we're up to date on that, but if we aren't, we will be. Physical education exclusion from class, no, reverse the course. No student can be excused from if I had class if they submit written information from assigned physician or if they have a disability and the, same thing for recess. Next one down, school must establish a site team to develop and implement strategies and educational effectiveness, practices to improve instruction, curriculum, and cultural competencies. So we will have to be, form that for the coming school year. District Assessment Committee. Same deal. We have to form a committee in house to advise the school board on administering standardized assessments to students, which will now include the civics test. District survey to collect student information. This, this is one that we're kind of waiting for MSBA to throw something out there. But school districts have to adopt a policy on how to conduct student surveys and using and distributing personal information on students collected from the surveys. So we're, like I said, that's, that's a policy that's coming, we just, hasn't, one hasn't been written yet. Exclusions and expulsions, physical assaults, school board must report through the Department of Electronic Reporting System each exclusion or expulsion and each physical assault of a district employee. School board must include. School board must include state student identification numbers affected. This is gonna be another sticky one, because especially the, I know our special ed director has lots of concerns about the amount of data that we can report on, on this area, so that's still kinda up in the air. But just so you're aware, it's there. And then support our students grant program, I just spoke to you about this. School counselor, school psychologist, school social worker, school nurse, chemical dependency counselor. And these have to be new positions, they can't be part-time or full-time positions that existed before. So this is, this would be creating an entirely new position. And there you go. That's what happened down south. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
What number topics? Who would like to start tonight?
I'd just like to ask, I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend that one night, and did you guys have a budget meeting that night also? Was there any summary from that of what, did we talk anymore about reductions or anything like that? I mean.
I don't think we have anything on reductions.
We, well, good point.
Oh, and then I'll take a, I'll take a sheet of that, did we get an updated sheet that night, too?
Good point, there, there were, based on the cuts that have been made at the previous meeting, Andrew provided us a updated budget with, with those cuts included in there, I think there was $358,000 worth. As far as further reductions, we did discuss a few of them at the time and decided that we were gonna wait till later on in the summer to make, because most of them didn't have, didn't need a direct impact, so we're gonna probably in the July meeting have that discussion again.
Just to point out, that was my fear when we passed that open full budget, is that we wouldn't get to any more cuts. And we'd be spending money out of the fund balance. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Tom?
Just one thing, did we get our paperwork from Chikagami that was requested at our last meeting?
No, that was actually on my, I meant to speak to that, too, thanks. We did send them a copy of that, that updated version. I know that at the end of the day, I see there's a message from, from their president to the board, and I haven't responded to her yet, but no, I have not seen any paperwork.
Have they signed your lease agreement?
I have, like I said, I, she called me at the end of the day, I know that there's. I know that, yeah, I know that there's a message waiting for me, but as of right now, no, I haven't.
Yeah, and these items are actually separate from the, from the lease agreement, because it is, it is part of the requirement for reporting as a 501(c)(3), so they've had a week. I don't think we should give them much more than perhaps another week.
Okay.
That all?
Yes, thank you.
Mark?
Nothing.
Leon?
Nothing. Tonight.
Motion to adjourn.